Home ownership is one of the best time proven methods for creating personal wealth. And West Tennessee Bank has a mortgage plan that will help you purchase the home of your dreams. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
Again, I'd like to say thank you. For having this at the courthouse here. It really means something to me. And I think it will do good for our future. At this time, I'd like Stacy Smith to call the jury.
Johnny Garner.
Here.
Jerry Low.
Yes.
Larry Blackshaw.
Here.
Al Cannon.
Here.
Andrea Hollis.
Here.
Jackie Butler.
Here.
Anne Moore.
Here.
Carolyn Higgins.
Here.
Russell Flayton.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Sandra Hyatt.
Here.
Joseph Valera.
Here.
Barry Smith.
Here.
Tim Crow.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Mike Alixans.
Yes.
John Wells.
Here.
Todd Lewis.
Here.
Seventeen present one out.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes for the September meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. We have approval in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have quarterly reports and budget amendments. We'd like to start with the school. We have a quarterly mind. Yes, but I don't know. Just check that.
Just making sure, sure that's close enough. Works, works just as well you want. Now you have an opportunity to look through the, you want to do the quarterly reports first or the budget amendments first?
I'm going to do the quarterly report.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, remember from the start that Stacy Keane provided us last year some of these quarterly reports. The sections to look at under these quarterly reports, the budget estimate, the year-to-date actual, and then the percent of the budget. It's what we have budgeted, what we have either spent or taken in, and the percentage is based on that for every line item. You have a chance to look at it. If you have any questions, that's why Stacy is here. Make a motion to approve quarterly reports.
Back there. We have a motion in the second to approve quarterly reports. Is there any discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, for the budget amendments, on page one, the federal project budgets, what you'll notice in the explanation, are most of these, especially the federal dollar, are the carryover budget or revenue that came back to us. So this is where we have to review budget that in our line items. The majority of those explanations deal with the carryover for the federal projects. Following that, we have general purpose budget amendments, which is page three. That first section, these are coming out of fundabouts, the maintenance of plant is dealing with safe school grant funds that are being utilized to improve our, our schools. In that second section, the regular instruction deals with what we pay out each late fall, which is what we call equity pay for teachers. As part of their salary base, we receive a monthly sum from the state for equity pay. Small school districts get an extra bump on the BEB to compete against larger school districts that have more local tax base. We choose to pay out a month's sum usually prior to Thanksgiving break along with when we pay our classified staff their bonuses, longevity checks. And then we also have some who use option two, which is like the Christmas club with their regular payroll. So we pay that all out a month's sum. Tim, it's going to be Thursday. Kelly, you want to be the teller?
I'm going to come on Friday.
Well, they were wrong checks. We use regular deposit. We don't do checks anymore. And then finally, this last line with technology. This is the last opportunity we have to take advantage of the E-rate. We are contributing to our E-rate purchasing. This is for internet technology hardware that's used to improve connectivity or classrooms. This is not purchasing laptops, computers, or other devices, but this is providing all the hardware to continue to improve our technology connectivity. Our contribution of 75,000 puts us with the match over 300,000. So that's our portion to that, just to take advantage of it so we can get that technology, hopefully to last us for a few years in it.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, Andrea Hollis. To accept the amendments for the second.
Motion in the second. Any more discussion? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, for the school reports and budget amendments, we have the highway report.
I make a motion to approve quarterly reports.
Second. Yes, I applaud you. I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep my phone on silent. We have a motion in the second for the quarterly reports and any budget. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See, what this morning, we didn't have any heat in here that was going to heat. I think they got the dick. Next, we have the trustee.
Ralph King, Chief, turns the matter to you before we start with the legal. Having the quarterly report. I'll make a motion to approve quarterly reports.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion on the trustee report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have the county chairman of the Southwestern.
The first is county chairman of quarterly reports. Did everyone get copy? Any questions?
Do you want to make a motion?
Guess I can. I'm going to roll.
We have a motion in the second. Second about Todd Lewis. Any discussion on him? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Second, we have the Southwest report. Is there any questions?
Jerry. Second.
We have a motion to approve my account. Second about Mr. Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? But do you have any?
We have several budget amendments. One of the main ones is for the construction of the anthill. We need, we say the divisional, for the library issue. I need to show that money coming in and how some of these can add, and I need y'all to approve it again, so we may do that for you. Don't we all get it? The second budget amendment is for the construction and a library. We have gotten Savannah, who is going to be librarian, and worked out some things that we worked out on this, and we, we have got that, and we also need those approved because they're not in there by the time. How was Chen's? Pardon? How was Chen's? The, the library budget, there were some things in there that we had to, didn't know who the new librarian is going to be, and so we just kind of go with you. And now that she's here and getting her ready plan, obviously she's, so it's a big, so we're taking care of that, right? Any questions?
Miss Judy.
Huh?
Did you get any mail from the roof on that chest?
No, sir, we haven't. Ralph, did you hear from Ralph on that?
Uh, no, we asked it out of the phone a bit, yes.
Okay. We, we did have a link, I know that rapid speeds, so, but that roof, we need the roof.
Move to approve all amendments.
Back there. I have a motion to approve all the budget amendments by Mr. Barry Smith and second by Mr. Jerry Emerson. Any more discussion on the budget amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
As she mentioned earlier, that we have a new library again, and I'd like to introduce you, Ms. Savannah Gilbert, the director of our library report.
Hello. I guess I asked about the new library, Chester County Library. This is just a little report showing some of the recent library events that we've had, as well as some statistics from our checkout history. I just wanted to point out a couple of small things. Last time I presented to y'all, the children was making some changes for our juvenile section. Just to show how one small bookshelf can change irrespective of the children. We put our record copies on one shelf in 15 days, 39 record copies were checked out. The next month, we had 152. So as you can see, putting one shelf to the side of their kids, it has really increased the participation we give. We also held a library card signup event. We had 23 children sign up to get new library cards, and then our home online library system. And this kind of incentive library focus is, is increasing the usability of the library and trying to get more people to come in. So a few things that we will be doing in these next few months, we will be enhancing our online audio book collection, as well as reading program library collection. We have started taking a note, you see this on our checkout stats, of our reference questions were asked. As you can see, for the month of October, we had 44 reference questions that were not necessarily locally asked. And we're also keeping track of tech trainings now that are over 10 minutes, so that we can see what programs we need to add to better service our community. So these are just a couple of things that our library is doing around the house. And we've also included a copy of our newsletter for y'all. Any questions?
I was asked if we're having a new library, and they wanted to know if the times is going jazz. And I thought, well, I didn't know yet that you would probably post it if you were.
Well, twice in times, they are tied into a state report, which is done before I came in. And because of that, we are not allowed to decrease for sure our hours of need play for a year. At the moment, I'm just trying to kind of see what works best with our community. It does seem like there might be a need for later nights, but that's something I'm locked in until the next fiscal year right now. And I want to say one thing, I appreciate Judy because when the budget was, one thing y'all might have studied on there was other supplies, or what y'all know that was useful. It's for programming, so basically we do get the kids coming in, get adults coming in, using our library on a regular basis.
Anyone have any questions for our new library? Next on the agenda, we have, now we're supposed to have a representative of the senior class of 2020 for the project graduation. Here we go.
Hi, I'm Kelly Burton, I'm here to represent for Project Graduation. For those of you who aren't familiar with Project Graduation, it's basically an event that we host every graduation night to help keep seniors on the streets and, um, bad things. People always say that now, because, you know, there are a lot of alcohol and other drugs that teenagers are prone to do, especially on a, of a high graduation. And Project Graduation is a way to keep them off the streets and out of that sort of conduct, and we provide events like illusionists, tricycles, up and jumping cones, it's just a big old one time. And we just want to promote that, so, yeah.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion again, before we give it the time, but five hundred and eleven.
I'll try to, there.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your station name again?
Kayla Burton. I bet you're in the hallway the other day at school.
Do you prevent some things? I'm glad you came.
Thank you, Brad.
You need to scare me off the top of that mother to buy you a bar of brits.
My holy trust, my holy trust.
Next, we have the representative of Southwest Electric for our program name, Mr. Billy Gordon.
All right, good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Appreciate you all asking me to come and talk for just a few minutes about Southwest Electric and rural broadband. It seems to be a big deal nowadays, and it's becoming more and more popular, there's more and more questions, comments, and concerns about it. So I was asked to come up, I gave the commission on where Southwest Electric's at in that. My name's Billy Gordon, I'm the vice president of engineering. Now that title sounds extremely alluded, but really we're a small business, right? So a lot of people were a lot of asks. A lot of information I presented today is not any of the information directly by me, but I've got a great team of folks behind me, they've done a lot of data and a lot of research. So what I want to tell you a little bit about for us is our story, and kind of how we got to where we are today with rural broadband. Why does it fit the Southwest Electric mission? Where we're at currently in that process, why we think we can make a difference. And then finally, wrap it up with where we're at with grants, metals, and those kinds of things. So a little bit about our story, and how we got to where we are. Prior to 2017, it was actually illegal for cooperatives to be in the broadband business. We couldn't provide telephone or internet service in our service area. We've been keeping our own since about 2015. So a lot of questions, a lot of comments, and we get calls at our office a lot. And we heard that the governor called us, we're doing some reports and some studies, and so we, we recognized that it was pretty imminent that the Broadband Accessibility Act is going to be passed. So in 2017, we commissioned a feasibility study. And that feasibility study came back at $110 million. And once we picked ourselves up off the floor, the price back at $110 million, we thought, let's not believe on that shit, because we're a rural cooperative, and our financing comes from our representatives, and we want to do the right thing by our representatives. And so we put that feasibility study on the shelf, and we continued to take phone calls, and we continued to monitor and require, to see what was going on in the nation, and what was going on in the state. And so we continued to do that, we recognized we didn't want to be the first. So in 2019, the Broadband Accessibility Act had been passed for about 18 months. Several of the cooperatives in the state and other places around the nation had already moved forward. So we commissioned a second study, to see just how much cheaper they got, if any. Well, the second study came back at $100 million. Not much to say at all. And we recognized that that is a huge expense. So why do we think that this fits? Why should we even be looking into this? If you go back in Southwest Electric history, we were formed 85 years ago. The reason why Southwest Electric was formed is because of rural areas of counties that we serve that no one can serve. And we feel like that resonates with broadband. A lot of the people that live in rural communities today have no access to it. They've been asking for years and years for people to come, and no one's ever come. And so we recognize that it's a difficult business model, but we see the need there. So where are we at currently in the process? Southwest is made for with engineering for the entire power system. So just to give you guys an idea, you guys are all familiar with Southwest Electric here in the Chester County area, Henderson specifically. I actually came from Jackson Energy Authority about eight years ago, and so I was used to being on a small electric system where I could feed from corner to corner in about 15 minutes. Southwest Electric serves 50,000 members, crushing parts of 11 counties. We're a big service area. And so that comes at a cost to do this entire project, things like timeline, and phasing, and those kinds of things. So we went ahead and moved forward with engineering. The purpose of doing engineering is so that we could narrow down and refine what those costs are. So instead of looking at it from a 30,000 foot view, let's find a little deeper and get more detail. So we've done that. And what we've done is we have a phased approach planned for five, construction in five different phases. A phase is approximately a year. And so we're moving forward with that. The first thing that we've wanted to do is see what kind of grant options are out there. You guys know the state of the city, this will be the third year that grant points have been available. And so just today, actually, I submitted for grants for three different service areas for Southwest Electric. One of them is here in Chester County. Specifically with those grants, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how high Chester County is going to rank from the state standpoint. The governor, Governor Lake, you remember, his, one of his very first executive orders was to research things that could be done to rural communities. And he's offered additional grant points for key communities that are distressed and at risk. Fortunately, for Chester County, you are not distressed or at risk, but that doesn't bode well for the grant center. But here regardless, so that we can express interest at the state level, we applied for a grant from this location to this area, and I submitted that today. So let me tell you a little bit about the monies that would be planned to be spent in Chester County. In this service area, in one of this county, I would estimate about 18.2 billion dollars would be our cost of the office county. And that's for past about 6,600 households, based on our revenue count. As you can see, that's a pretty big problem. And we have four other major counties and parts of six others, seven others to look at as well. So we moved forward with applying for grants. We'll see how that goes. The green area that I did submit, and I'll be glad to provide amounts or anything like that, depending on what I'm saying, is an area that's east of the city limits, but not as far as Jackson Creek. And everything north to the Madison and Energy County line, and everything south to the county line. So some roads, for instance, Trice Road, Rabbit Ranch, Lindell, Parks Creek, Old Jackson Creek, that's kind of the area that we're looking at. There's some other, the areas where we might shoot to build around the city, we recognize there's a lot of opportunities in the city for people to subscribe and show us. But the way the business models are planned, the way the business model works, it is really, really difficult for this project to be successful at six meters per mile. And that's about our average in the rural area. So you transition that to the city, we're costing 30 meters per mile. You can see the vast difference. Obviously, it's a lot of line to build to touch very few people. So why do we think that we're a little bit different than everyone else that provides service in these areas? I'd like to say, I hope that we're trusted in the community. I would hope that everyone here would say in the last, maybe 10 years, that their life's going to go out quite as much. We have invested a lot of money in Rite Aid. We've invested a lot of money in technology, so things that would direct our eyes where to go to the problem, instead of starting a subsection right on their way out. I mentioned Rite Aid. And so we, we hope that our report in the community is getting better and better as time goes on. And we hope that, that that resonates with the community. I saw a sign the other day that said, "Support local industry and local business, John Pope." And it said, "Because Amazon will not support your people," right? There's a lot of truth to that. And Henderson and Chester County is a very prominent community, and we hope that, that up to this point, we've been checking for a profit. Another thing that makes us a little bit different, we're not interested in making a profit like others are. So when we think about the life of an investment for us, it's based on how many years we're going to depreciate that investment out. Some of the more profitable entities are looking at rates of return for 18 months, 24 months. Our rate of return, I always use the joke that if we buy a hole that we put in the ground, we have that hole in our books for 40 years. If that hole lasts for 41 years, then we won. We did good, right? If we have to change that hole out for 40 years, then we have to write a little bit off. But we're not looking at making money back for stockholders and shareholders, right? We're here in the community. So what kind of business are we in for Southwest Electric at that point? Some people would say that we sell the product, and the product that we sell is electricity. I always tell my guys, we're actually in the service business, because unfortunately, for you all, you're going to buy a power for us in political theory. It's just the way you did get set this thing up, is what it works. What we'd like to say is that we provide service, and we hope that what we do is we enhance your quality of life. So a lot of people don't think about when they come home and put the switch, let life's there. We look at, we're not just providing lights, but we're providing the refrigerator to keep your food cold, providing heat when your family comes home. All those things that surround your daily life. I always tell my folks that if our members forget that we're there, that we're doing everything right. It's not a job of the board for sure. And obviously, we'll be there when, when the storms come. But we think that broadband is that next step. Marty said it's hard to find people to build out into the rural areas, very difficult to do. That's the reason we were established 85 years ago. So we recognize that quality of life issues as far as broadband goes are things like people getting able to work from home, being able to visit people online. Some people invest in, 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 in. Troy mentioned the school budget and E-rate. It's, it's pretty difficult for us to do online study if there is no online help. So there's definitely opportunities there for us to invest in the community. And before I open up for questions or anything, there's one folk that I think that, that Southwest Electric feels is, is, is very synonymous with its product for us. I think J. O. Cady was mentioning the same, that rising tide raises our ships. And we hope that an investment in broadband, should we move forward through all five phases, is an investment in economic development for all of the communities that we serve. Hopefully, it is a rising tide that raises our ships. So with that, I will open the floor for questions. And if there's not any questions, I will be eager to agree to.
How many of the press candidates are in your local county area?
There is one distress. There are two distress. Yeah, yeah, so you're right, right. There are two distress, and there is one at risk. So the other grant areas we apply for, this is. So the other grant areas we applied for this year was Hardland County, which is distressed, and Haywood County, which is at risk. And so since Chester County is not, uh, not following that, um, that timeline or that schedule, uh, there are additional grant points. So the grant is scored. If you check this box, that's plus five points. So submitting for distressed or at-risk counties is like extra credit on the account. And we also, Arby County is distressed and we would anticipate submitting for some grants on Arby County as well. All right. I will be here all night until it's over and all the end and back on. That's it.
Next on the agenda, I would like the approval of, uh, animal committee for projects for animal control. And on this committee, we have Tim from Johnny Garner, Heather Griffin, Sherry McKinnon, and Jennifer McBride. These people all are involved and show interest in this project. And I would like to submit them to, for a meeting to discuss possible options to animals. Would I make a give a motion to receive these animal committees?
Andrew, applause. Side motion.
We have a motion and we have a second.
I say, can I help you?
We have a second. Would there be any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of us? Thank you. One of our largest calls to my office and I'm sure the sheriff's office is for animals. We need to get him to address this issue, uh, the best we can. Next on the agenda, for the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury, we need compliance with the copy of the letter that issued with the Capitol Act, I know, and a refunding solution for the animals. Being in compliance, we have already passed a motion and had second and an approval. This is just a compliance letter from the Comptroller. Everyone has understood, would there be any questions about this?
Does it require the action?
No, we don't. So this is a action.
Do you change it?
This is combined with the, uh, letter to the Comptroller that has to be noted in each of the amendments.
You prefer the dollar, you got it up here, right?
So on other business, the sheriff would like to speak to us about any program.
I would like to ask for permission, I guess, to, um, have some money left over in evil equipment, line on. And we want to do shopping, the city's done that for the last couple of years and, uh, it's a good deal. And, and we want to, they're doing ten next week, you're going to join with them and we got fifteen. The money's in my budget. And actually I got a donation out there, I had it tonight for nearly twenty-five percent. And I've been running some over and over since I expect, but I need to know that I've got the most proof before we start.
How much total?
Two thousand.
Move it approved.
We have a, a, a motion and a second for the new program for the sheriff. Any discussion anymore to the sheriff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all.
Next, I just like to give some information. Anyone that, our health department is issuing free flu shots tomorrow only from nine o'clock in the morning to one o'clock at the Henderson Farmer's Market. This will be no cost and anyone here in the county visiting, they're welcome to get Would there be anyone else that would like to come before the commission?
Uh, questions, uh, from the, the thing, is there a lease law in, uh, was it, uh, decision from Allen? Is there a lease law or was, that is another question?
President, please allow, uh, if I missed a turn, we're, we're forced, we have to give you two warnings. So if we get, we get a complaint on a dog in your neighborhood, you complain, we will go out and then notify the, that only animal to put it up. Uh, you call again, we do that a second time, a third time, we write a ticket. And with that ticket, they'll come to court and you have to come to court, uh, prove the complaints. But our BA makes us do that. We've done that for years. Uh, I think it's there, but we've done it for calls. We don't have an animal, we don't have nothing to do with it. If I go out there and the judge of court is willing to do something with it, we run it. So that's where he makes us want to try to correct the problem before it comes to court. Now, Judge McKinnity does all need to, to disangle tiles. We just got looked in with a bunch of pot-bellied pigs. They just left them at the house and run all of a sudden. Uh, we, we, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't got a college yet, but we did, we're in animal business, like Tim brought me, the commissioner brought him. The sheriff broke in and, uh, we just got hands and tied to all of this. But if, if we get complaints, we got to deal with it.
So if a dog, if it runs loose, there's not a law that the dog can't run loose until he gets a complaint, is that correct?
Well, we, we don't, in other words, if we're driving down the road and we see a dog running, we don't investigate that. But if we get a complaint, we'll come and address the complaint. And, and, and that, and like I said, when it gets to the form, most of the time people put on us, once we tell them what it's going to consist of, come to court and all that, they'll deal with the problem themselves. But if they don't, we got to have the complaint, the one calling to come to us, because I live with dogs. You know, those decades, you go out there, they can't say that that dog belongs to you. So it's got to be people that actually complain to come to court and say that we noticed their dog in there and that was not on the label.
So if you get a, say a stray dog comes to your house, is, uh, is there a place you can carry it? What do you do in a situation like that? Is it an unmanned dog or what do you do?
The sheriff. We're going to try to start this committee to address all the issues with the animals and try to figure a way to, to, to solve it. Just work with the counties and, and the people to, to address it. There's, there's not just one problem. There's, it's, it's kept, I'll put the camera up and I know the ones that don't call the sheriff, cause I was waiting for some reason, and I'd like to help you to solve the problem.
I said, they complain out of, of, since I've been there, since Jerry Powell, the mayor's, they're with the dogs, you're, you're, you're going to worry about it. Then it's going to be an expensive problem.
If illegal, dump a dog on somebody else's property, you can prove it, doesn't it? What, what, what's your answer?
If it was illegal to dump a dog on somebody else's property, that would be, which is the pain of the dog.
I want to ask the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, does Chester County have a lease law? Like you're supposed to keep your dog up or do they just get the roaming law?
The state has one.
Or does y'all have an ordinance? You got an ordinance, gets everything held.
There's a state lease law that is all mighty by the county's side. The counties, it's easier to enforce if the counties just have a dog. In other words, the city ordinance, there's a city ordinance.
Well, a county ordinance is what we need. A county ordinance.
Well, there's a state law, you don't need an ordinance, it's a state law, it's up to the state. But we have to have something to do with it.
Yes, animals, even not just dogs, but different types of animals, uh, we get calls on quite a bit.
We've had horses, cows, we've took cows. Had horses, pot-bellied pigs, owls.
Anyone else like to address the commission?
I was thinking of a quick, um, equipment update. Our AD current will be here to do some research, um, to pull lymph nodes off of them. And that is the third piece of equipment from the original one point of J for the inaugural. Um, so I want everybody to be aware of that. And then we are building our education observation room, which I'm really excited about because we're going to be bringing in children from this county and other counties to show them what we do in our talk room building. Um, and we will have open access, I mean, it's on the left, right, call up on that call. And then, um, we would take two or four sets that we were for our education now, we're preparing. And when we get off the building, we'll fill in all the equipment and then we'll, we'll process in six thousand tons of your product that we're talking about. And those were the, um, the material workers received, I got eight thousand dollars, she provided, that was for our work.
Also, uh, community and county event, we're going to have our second annual Christmas tree lighting, which, uh, invite everyone, your neighbors and all, especially the small children, we're going to have Santa Claus and Miss Claus and Grinch and hopefully have a good time for the community and the county. That being, uh, same day, January the fifth, that the Christmas parade is on and this will be here.
December.
December. I'm sorry. December of the field. So would anyone else like to address the commission before we charge the district?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we need the, the, we talked about the amount of, amount of, to Stacey Smith, Commissioner Allen McKinnon, and Madam Director, Madam Director.
Yes.
All right. To reappoint of, once to the nine-one-one board, uh, say again, if you would.
Stacey Smith, who is on, is on, Commissioner Allen McKinnon, who is on.
Allen McKinnon.
And the director being you appointing, taking, being the board.
And Madam Director.
Madam Director, okay. She's the vice representative. We always try to have one representative from the board.
Do we have a motion to approve the nine-one-one?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, Johnny, for a pardon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joe Malero. Any discussion about them appointees? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of us? Thank you. Any other business before we charge the district? I am with us to charge the district.
Okay, sir. We have several candidates today. Mister Jay Johnson, Amber DeCobal, Vera Reed, Ricky Lynn Barclay, Linda Duckett Carter, Bridget Lynn Nelson, Adrian R. Holly, Christine Miss Kelly, I'm sorry, Christie Miss Kelly, Sherry C. Evans.
Motion to approve the district.
Move approved.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to approve, uh, one-on-one pardon, and second by Mike Anten. Any discussion on the ones to approve? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of us? Thank you. For the rest on the agenda, I want to give a motion.
Move approved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all. Don't forget to come to the conference. If you'd like any company, everybody. Thank you.